All right, we shall begin. So I'd like to take the nominations for Chair of the Union Committee. I'd like to nominate my client. Are there any other nominations? All in favor?
Do you accept it, Mike?
Oh, yeah.
You don't look real happy about this.
Thank you. Oh, yours mine.
I'd like to nominate Silver Lake, Summer, the vice chair.
That's not mine. I have some.
All fair. Secretary, do we have nominations for the secretary?
Hi, I'm Alvin myself, Jill Vaughn. I'll second that.
All fair.
Can I have a motion from the region side on the minutes from April 13?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain, opposed? Thank you. For the union side?
Can I have a motion? Two votes in favor, 13.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye. Nothing under old business and new business, which I would happily turn over to neutral. Excellent. I'd like to introduce Dr. Jill Prue. She is our candidate that we would like to nominate for Assistant Superintendent. I would like to tell you a little bit about her, about the process we used to bring her before us. We advertised the position on school spring, and we had 73 applicants. They were reviewed by all of our principals, our special ed director, and myself. We narrowed down the pool to 17 applicants, which we then brought before the subcommittee. The subcommittee consisted of 13 people. It was school committee members, it was administrators, it was teachers, and school committee members. And we reviewed all 17 applicants, and we decided to invite seven people in for interviews with the first round. The interviews were about half hour, 45 minutes each. From that pool of seven, three people were invited back for a second round interview. And in the second round interview, it was very clear and decided by the subcommittee to nominate Jill and to bring her forward as the only candidate that they recommended for the Assistant Superintendent position. It was unanimous decision, so I'm absolutely thrilled. Jill has a great background. Her learning curve will be nominal, which makes my life ever so much easier. She has been an Assistant Superintendent in the situative public school system for five years. Previous to that, she was a principal in Lakeville for two years. Prior to that, she worked for 16 years in King Philip Regional School System, so she got background in between Treetown, Lakeville, and King Philip with regional systems, which is incredibly helpful for us. She was there for 16 years. She started as a teacher, became curriculum leader, assistant principal, and then principal. She also has her doctorate from the University of Rhode Island, Rhode Island College of Providence. It's a PhD in education. She has her masters and her bachelor's from Brandeis. I have known Jill professionally when I was Assistant Superintendent, there's a group called Lighthouse Group that I had met her previously, and I can tell you, she is an incredibly diligent, hard worker. I have always been very impressed, I think, her personality and her background and her incredible passion for believing in all children is exactly what we need in the district. So I'm thrilled that she's interested in coming forward. We are a very special district, and I think she is a great fit for us. So at this point, I believe the process would be if anybody has any questions they'd like to ask Jill. Do you mind, I'll start on the region side.
Yeah.
I think that would be great, yeah. Do you want to start down the side?
Okay. I'm Jill Vaughn. I'm with the Kingston Elementary School Committee.
I'm Jean Coleman, also with Kingston.
Michael Calat, Kingston Elementary School Committee.
Paul Jones, Halifax Elementary School Committee.
Summer Schmeling, Chair of the Halifax Elementary School Committee.
Mike Hansel, Plumpton School Committee.
John Holmson, Chair of the Plumpton School Committee.
Christine Haley, Business Manager of Aron's.
I know. All right, Jill, I was thrilled when I found out that you were the candidate of choice, having participated in the interviewing process, and welcome, welcome, welcome. So glad to have you in front of us tonight.
Jim Womber, Silver Lake Regional, town of Kingston.
Edward Dejeanay, Regional, Halifax.
Laura Telford, Regional, Regional School Committee, Kingston.
Eric Cronin, the Chair of the Kingston Elementary School Committee, and Eric Cronin on the Regional School Committee.
Mark, we've only just won a regional school from Kingston.
Hi, Jill, welcome back. Maureen Springer from Plumpton.
Does anyone on this side have any questions? Anything to do at all? I think we shared her resume with everybody. Show them.
Just, I am welcome, and I notice you have experience both regional school systems and situative school system, and there's a lot of meetings to do with the regional school system. Glad to see you have that experience. Thank you.
We call you Dr. Jill.
Jill is fine also. Whatever you prefer.
Love these J names.
If there are no questions from Silver Lake, I move that we accept with pleasure the Assistant Superintendent Jill Prue, correct? Is that how we say it?
Second. Is it okay for the union to ask a question? Yeah. Hold on just a moment.
She asked us.
I'm sorry?
You asked her, did it get any questions?
Yep.
On this?
Say I have to vote after.
I have to do questions.
Sure.
Are there any questions on the union side?
Do we have a second to Maureen's motion? Second? All those in favor? Second? Aye. Opposed, abstained? Thank you.
Do you have a future for, like, who is?
Prue.
Prue. Nomination filed.
Second? I'll take my motion.
All fair.
Well, welcome.
We have cookies.
Welcome to the fun.
That's awesome. Do you have any questions of us?
I'm sure I will have many over the years, and I just thank you, and I appreciate your support, and I'm looking forward to working with you and supporting you in your goals and your dreams for your children, and I'm really excited to be working with I love you, Joy, who is genuine and sincere for students and the community and staff. I'm really excited about that. You're involved, so thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out, I heard the word "yours" before.
I did, too.
A la de Lee. So thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. So. I guess it works. Never mind. All right, moving on. We have some bids and someone around here will contact me.
I know this is what you've been waiting for, this is why did you show up tonight? Thank you. Except how we go to bid for certain items than more glamorous things. We go to bid for septic pumping, trash removal, and health clinic supplies, so that's for nurses' offices. What happens is we collect information for all of our schools to see what they're needing for the new year. We compile that information, we put it out in the local newspaper, then we send bid packages out to all vendors that have bid in the past, anybody that is a question, that has called, that's some misinformation. And we do get requests because of what's in the newspaper, so that we do get a lot of folks with that. And then in turn, we receive bids from interested parties, and in the very last page of the package tonight, there's a summary page of what's going on this year. The septic pumping services, this year the minimum bid was wastewater services. We have had them in the past. There's been one on the vendor that's won a couple different years, but wastewater's been doing this quite some time, and their bid was $90 less than what we paid last year.
Was it a transposition?
It was a real number. Yes, I think when they lost the bid last year, they decided to shake things up a little bit. Then next is our trash removal, once again, our public service, also known as Allied Waste, has won their bid. Their bid this year is 4% higher than last year. For several years, the bid was pretty flat, but they increased to 4% this year. For health clinic supplies, this year we received two bids, and what happens is that is bid by each individual item that's needed in the nurses' offices. So multiple vendors could win pieces of this bid, so that's what we do, we award it by each number that happens. And then I just wanted to mention that in addition to these categories, we do also go to bid with the Educational Cooperative, which is cooperative, you know, with advanced together local communities and school districts, so we have some bargaining clauses, we're going up to bid for items. We do that for classroom supplies and custodial supplies. We pay a small fee, and they collect the information, we collect the information from the schools forward to them, and they compile all of that information, so hopefully our bulk will, the bulk of the items will work for us. They do everything from the advertising, from the awarding of bids, and they send us a summarized version of that that I share with all the schools, so they can order their supplies for the new year. And then in addition, I just wanted to mention that we do join with Plymouth County Commissioners to go up to bid for fuel oil. Right now, we only have one building, the administration building that does that. And we also try to join with them on the bid for diesel and gasoline. We don't have a huge bond compared to most of the towns around here, so we're kind of a small component of the area, but we do do that, just to try to get any benefit that we can, any savings that we can. So on the sheet that's been handed out, we give the summaries of who bid, what happened. For our health clinic supplies, we sent out 10 bids to interested parties. We only received two back this year. This is the lowest we've had in a while. And between those two companies, they share most of the items that we need. On septic pumping, we sent out seven packages to different companies, and we only heard back from one this year. That was a surprise to us, because we usually have a little competition with that. And the same with trash removal, a little competition, but each one, we only received one bid this year.
And Christine, you mentioned that we didn't grant it to wastewater last year, correct?
Correct.
So the person that won the bid last year didn't respond?
Correct.
Wow.
Yeah, I was very, very surprised, because they've been pretty aggressive trying to get into the area.
Yeah.
So surprising. And I do actually, when it's in the packages, I do make a phone call just to make sure that interested parties are getting the packages they need. What I've found for something, especially with the health clinic supplies, our volume is pretty small, and it's a lot of work for selling a few mandates. But companies have been with us for a long time, and we've been working with them, so we know how they work on the bids, and they work well with us.
You would think. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Ma.
I'd just like to say, for $40,000 for trash removal, there seems to be quite a bit of competition out there.
Your last year, I got four bids.
You would think that would get something.
I switched vendors on two different properties that I own for pricing, I think. I don't know if, when these bids go out, you're actually mailing them directly to it?
We're mailing to everybody that participated last year that expressed an interest previously, and then anybody that calls based on the advertiser that's in the newspaper. And that runs, that's up to there for two weeks. And I've actually looked into the Educational Cooperative, some of these items, but they don't have all of these types of bids that we do. There aren't a lot of folks that want to bid for trash removal, so they're escaped, so there are other options, but that's how we have done it in the past, so we continue with that. So it'd be interesting to see if this is a change in the times or if this is just a group year. Because we don't bid this year about, just about the same time as last year, so I was surprised that we had little interest.
I move for Silver Lake, the recommended awards for the health clinic supplies, the septic system pumping, and the trash removal services.
Do it the second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Thank you.
Have a motion on the inside to the septic, trash, and health supplies?
I would move that we accept the health clinic supplies, septic system pumping, and trash removal services as listed.
Aye. That's it? Okay. Can I have a motion from Silver Lake to adjourn? Do you want me to? Second, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Thank you.
Silver Lake, are you adjourned, or are you just adjourned the joint meeting?
Joint only.
And going for a brief recess?
Yeah, that's what she said. Definitely brief recess, yeah. Motion on the inside to adjourn. Thank you. Let's call to order the Silver Lake August 10th School Committee meeting, a little truncated versus our norm. Any public participation? Seeing none. I am going to, actually, let's do minutes first. Can I have a motion on our minutes from July 13?
Move to accept the July 13 regular session minutes.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay, very good. Can I have a motion to move our?
I'll do that.
Thank you.
I don't know what you were going to say.
No.
I'd like to move a presentation about the, just as part of the presentation for the conservation issue that town of Kingston's asking us about, Fred's here for that, so.
Okay, great. Thank you. Second, to move that out?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All righty. Fred, if you don't mind kind of giving the similar overview that we had in the subcommittee, I guess, Mark, do you want to pick it off?
Yeah, we just briefly talked about what this issue is. Town of Kingston, several years ago, came to Silver Lake and asked, there's a small parcel of land that is on the other side of the current Lake Street that we all know as Lake Street, that crosses the Jones River. There's an old Lake Street that's part of an old road layout that goes on the other side towards Silver Lake that used to be Play Street. That piece of land that's in between those two road layouts is a parcel of land that belongs to Silver Lake Regional School District. Those do the bounty committee forever like me. Remember that we voted to try to take this piece of land and make it available to town of Kingston. We found out that to convey land from a school district required active research even back then. In the process, we moved forward to try to put it into the town's ability for them to do the drainage work on the property. There was an thread to see to what has happened since 2015, but our intent at the time, retired committee voting unanimously to try to transfer this piece of land or make it available to town of Kingston for that use. And Fred, I think, can jump in and tell you what happened after 2015.
Yeah, so we had the issue that came up with Kingston regarding the potential land sale to Kingston. We had the House of Representatives involved in several communities in Silver Lake, and what came through that process, through that procedure and process, was clarification on how the decisions need to be made, whether or not there had to be legislative action, and with regard to the approval, what the approval process might be. So it seems very clear that this is an easement situation, because the town of Kingston is looking for permanent access to the premises and permanent changes to the premises. So when the House Council had given their opinion, when we were talking about the sale of land, the question is whether there is any distinction between the sale and an easement. And if you look at the document I just passed out, and you get to the third page, there is no distinction. So whether you're doing a sale or whether you're doing an easement, it still requires legislative action. And in fact, interestingly, and some of you may recall this, Silver Lake is actually listed there granting an easement to the town of Kingston, and that was access to the water tower in Kingston. So not only is that the usual process, it was actually the process used here in Silver Lake with regard to the town of Kingston. Now, what that means as far as the process is actually, and by the way, on the last page, I actually have the legislation that occurred in 2001, which we got to the water tower. So you'll see it at the top of the last document in this group. The first two pages actually details the process to either sell land, or in this particular case, it would be an identical process for the granting of easement. And if you, and this is January 25, 2017. So the first thing is that there has to be a duly posted meeting for an open session for the school committee in the towns of Kingston and Halifax. The agenda has to indicate that residents may offer comments in the terms of the conveyance authorized by the act. It should also be listed on the agenda that is a vote item. The notices and agenda additionally should also be mailed to the Board of Selectment of each town. The mailing should include a copy of the law and the draft, in this case, easement. After meeting itself, there should be several copies of the draft act available for the public. After comments have been made, then the school committee can, at that point in time, vote the easement request up or down. It does not have to go back to the towns, it does not need to be voted by the towns. That was an issue that was clarified as we went through the process of potentially doing the land conveyance. So once the procedural process is done, once the vote occurs, then the process is done, except, of course, the filing of the legislation. So the next step in the process would be to have the town of Kingston prepare the legislation for the easement, just like they did in 2001. I was here in 2001 when that particular process occurred.
Thank you, Fred. Just to clarify the work, the timing of this at this point, over the past two years of waiting, town of Rockland's involved in this process, and they have just recently, within the last 30 days, responded and they have provided the easement necessary for the work to go forward. So we are now, the, hold on. The town of Kingston, through the Conservation Commission, is applying for grant money to do this project. The scope of work includes drainage structures that are going to take water that is currently draining down Play Street from Route 27 all the way to Jones River, and make that water clean enough, or cleaner, so it can enter into the Jones River watershed. Jones River watershed is Kingston's water source, as well as the source for Kingston Bay, and it is an all-encompassing part of a good conservation project to take these point source pollutants out of going into the river. So they're hoping that this will be a beneficial project, and they'll be able to get funds to be able to do that in the near future. To apply for the grant, I think this board has already voted their support for the project to try and sell the land, but I think it would be good in a motion that we support their action to go forward and allow them access to the property again, just to clarify it for their preliminary studies for their grant, and then we go forward with the region.
I just want to clarify one thing. Our prior vote in the letter from John Tuffy, is that what you're referring to? Okay, that's Nellin Boyd at this point.
I don't know if we need to refer back to the prior vote that was taken by the school committee, because I think what you're discussing right now is while this process is going on, just giving the town of Kingston the right to go onto the property, to prepare whatever report or documents or whatever they need to do, the only time the easement becomes a factor is where you're looking for permanent access and permanent changes to the property. But just to go on to view it and make measurements, designs, whatever they think they need to do, that just requires a vote of the school committee to permit that to occur, and that is to have the right to come onto your property to do those things. But that's not an easement, doesn't require a license, all you're saying, like you would maybe to any other, let's say someone's doing construction, say, yeah, you have the right to come on our property to do construction. In this case, they're not making permanent changes, you know, based on the nature of your vote, they're just saying they can come on the property to do what they need to do and other than make permanent changes. And I don't see a legal issue associated with that, the school committee can vote that anytime they choose to. As far as the prior vote, there was probably a misunderstanding between, I don't have that in front of me, so I can't remember what the vote was. But if it was in the nature of a license, we can't do a license. A license isn't a project.
So that, go ahead and tell.
I'd just like to move that we grant the access to the property and to conduct whatever studies and research they need for the project to apply for their grant and survey work that they need to do on the property.
But without any permanent changes, too?
Without any permanent changes.
Okay, that's motion number one, and then do we then also want to do a motion?
Yeah, we'll get a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstained, opposed? No. Then we need a second motion to request Kingston to craft the special legislation, so that we have it processed in a time when the man are available to us in September.
Right, so we want, no later than, we pick the time, one, to have at least two weeks prior to our meeting, so that we can post that correctly, and it's available to notify the towns with a copy of the legislation going to each of the three towns.
If we got two weeks in advance of your next school committee meeting, that would be sufficient. There's no specific posting period, but a lot of public notices require one week, so I think you would ask them to get it to you two weeks in advance, which would give you a little leeway.
August 31st?
August 31st, it'll be the Thursday, Kingston's closed on half a Friday, so.
I'm planning on being at your September meeting, just to make sure, you know, things go smoothly.
Thank you, Fred.
Do you want to make that?
I'll move that motion to move to ask the town of Kingston to prepare the legislation, easement language for?
For the legislature.
For the legislature. And present the legislation to us no later than August 31, 2017, so that we can provide it to the towns at a time you matter, prior anyway, and that we would anticipate a public hearing on September 14, 2017, as part of our regular scheduled meeting. scheduled meeting.
Second, Jim, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Okay. Who is actually going to reach out and ask Kingston for that?
It should come from the school committee or the administration. We're the ones saying that.
No, I'm asking specifically who wants to, who's going to reach out.
I don't see why you wouldn't have Joy, and I would work with her if she had any questions. And as far as the procedural aspect, I would work directly with Joy to make, to craft the letters, to send to the towns, that whole procedure.
Okay.
Can I ask?
Copy Jake Tomlin, who's the council for Kingston, on an email, please.
Can I ask, Mark, can I be copied? Because we are the chair of that, co-chairs of that committee.
Facilities one.
Okay.
I think the subcommittee needs to be copied on each step of this particular process because just in case you need to call in a special meeting or something like that, what we're doing throughout the process. Typically, I'd also copy the chair on that, so the chair is also where.
Thanks, Fred.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, this problem is not, it's the ten balls kids, that's why.
If you don't want me, I'll listen to the Patriots on that.
While you're riding, be careful.
Thank you, Fred.
It's not going to be as exciting as a regular game. Brady's not going to be.
What are the Patriots doing right now?
This is.
Oh, exhibition season.
First, first.
Is it? Thanks, Fred. Just to let everyone know, Tom Calder is updated on this. He'll be here at our September meeting, and he's on board with moving this through the House for us. Okay.
How fast Kingston gets on.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Fred.
Civil League Educational Association, administrative review.
There's no meeting, but now that we've reorganized, they've reorganized the unit. I will contact Mike and Tom and explain that I'm reviewing the schedule for that and to be reorganized and we don't have a meeting.
Thank you. Carrera Technical Ed?
No.
No meetings.
Chairman's report. The only thing I want to mention, and it's actually two things, and this sort of dovetails, I guess, into the, what Jason usually shares with us. The budget outlook for the state is very poor. I'm sure that's not a surprise to anyone. A little birdie called me and filled me in recently on just how dire things look. And I'm quoting now saying that in the 28 years that the little birdie has been following these things, this is as dire as he's ever seen it. So we've got to kind of keep our eye on that. Secondly, just to make everyone aware, Kingston did a phenomenal job last year. They had a budget advisory meeting for us, I think Jim, you went to that. They invited the various participants in their budget, including Silver Lake. They're holding that again for this year's coming budget, September 7th at 6 o'clock. I have to tell you, Kingston did a phenomenal job last time, outlining their budget, drilling into their needs, and how they're going to, you know, attempt to meet their budget. So I look forward to this meeting with them again in September. And I'll share what happens after this in the, our next school committee.
But any one of us can go to that, correct?
I don't see why not. I was invited, I'm expected to attend, and I certainly am going to. You're more than welcome to join as well.
And that was September 7th at 6?
At 6.
Is it at the Kingston Town Hall, that, you know, the new one?
I believe it is. I don't know that I actually saw the exact location noted. They were vetting dates last time. It's usually there, it's in the second floor.
So you might want to post it if more than the amount of us are going to be there.
It's a very small room. I welcome people to think about going. It's a little bit tight quarters as well. So if people want to attend, let us know so that we can post it if we need to.
I will be there as representing the elementary school committee. But I'm also allowed, so.
Yeah.
You guys can have my.
Recloning. Legislative agent, again, Jason's in an RV, God knows where. Negotiations.
Executive.
Okay. Tac?
No meeting.
Thank you. Policy? No meeting. Revolving town, no meeting?
We haven't had a meeting, but I think we need to have one in September. There's some questions on some of the items that need to be taken care of.
Yeah, I think we cheat out of going to some of them if you wanted to. Yeah, okay. Safer?
We can finish up. Thank you, everybody, for the vote earlier for the conservation project and that issue. We also discussed the capital planning and where we're at with the projects that are going on this summer. We have a lot of things going on. The work is nearing completion on the plumbing that we put under the shops. We're waiting for some lighting to show up so that we can finish that, and we can get the epoxy floors in. And Kara feels that we will be meeting the goals and deadlines and will be able to open those shops when we open up school, even though there were a couple of setbacks, waiting for some lights. Figured project outside, but the landscaping is going in for most of it. The one issue that remains is they had to reroute the line slightly to go underneath a concrete ductwork that surrounds piping and conduits that have electricity and everything in it. And the concrete footing for that is deeper than anticipated and from the ASB plans that they had. So they had to go under that. And the process is taking a little more and will cost us a little bit more money. We didn't have any specifics on that. Christine and Kara thought that they were going to be able to stay pretty close to the budget that we had discussed on when we floated the money before. But there'd be some shift in and around, and we'll bring that to the September meeting. Still, a project that should be completed in time for school to start.
Mark, I apologize for this because I was in the prior meeting and had, I thought this question I would have asked then. When they started this project, do we have plans that like show something like that and wherever it is and how deep it is, how wide it is, is there?
The plans that I looked at, Grady Engineering, who was the consultant for us, that's providing engineering, showed all of that. In addition, they had found a couple of tanks that should have been collapsed when we built the school years ago. A few of those things added to the cost of this project. So originally, we had talked about some numbers that were probably tens of thousands less, but some of those things that were found in the process of doing the engineering after, once the engineering was done, are costing us some money. These items that should have been taken care of probably even before we built these schools, but they weren't. The structures are in the ground.
But the other thing that, let me just interrupt you. The other thing that we could not find, and it's actually, should be crucially followed this time, is there was no ASB build, which technically is supposed to be filed with the town as well. And it just seemed amazing to me that not only didn't we, did we not have a copy, but the town didn't. And they have to inspect the system, so it seemed a little bit odd. Whatever happens, we just go ahead and make sure we get it done this time and put one in the safe where they want.
The ASBs are part of the budget, and I did discuss this with Grady Engineering when I looked at the plans. But it looked like they had a pretty extensive idea of what they were going to find. Problem was, in this particular ductwork, the top and sides were on their plan, but not how deep the concrete went. And that's just how deep the footing was. But they're able to make it work. All the pitches are the same, pipe size is the same, everything, it's just a little bit more work again underneath the ductwork.
Mark and Maureen, you guys do such a nice job, particularly, I think, with your backgrounds as well, facilitating these types of topics and this stuff for the school and the committee. I just want to say thank you for that.
Can I just add one thing to that report? I know most of us were there, but I'd like to have it in the minutes for the SLEA. We did look again at the problems with the intense heat in the month of May that was unusual, but not unusual for this area. We're going to, we're going to see about, we had bought thermometers for each classroom to try to track them. Joy has that in a Google document. We're going to reissue the thermostats because we expect September may also give us some very warm conditions. We looked into solar film for the windows, but it was cost prohibitive, and we don't believe it will really give us what we need. Plus, there could be a problem with the warranty on the windows by adding that. So we're shying away from that. We did discuss it with Kara, she has some ideas. Mark has a meeting set up with a solar company that may be able to give us some ideas as well.
But also those blinds.
But also those blinds. So we're trying to look at different ways to do this. You know, obviously it's not in the budget, but in a sense, it is an emergency. It's a safety issue for both our students and our staff. So we want to make sure that they know that we're not dropping moments.
Good point. Thank you. Sleep study?
We need to decide what we're going to do on that. I've actually gotten some contact from different people to say, well, what are we doing with it? I had said, you know, we're sort of in a flux right now, and it's the summer and stuff. I know, I'm pretty sure we haven't gotten any report from our first student, which is critical to keep going on this. We've already agreed that we're not going to touch the elementary school, but I think we have to answer to the 50% that want it to see a change. It's becoming more and more prominent, you know, in the news when you read about it. There's a lot of it with surrounding towns. I don't expect it to happen probably within the next couple of years, but I think we will see legislation and it's going to be mandated. So, you know, I think we need to keep that committee on the boards anyway. And I'll keep looking for stuff and see what I can find, but I would like to ask Joy to contact Elaine again. And, you know, we paid quite a bit of money for that Maswell report.
I'd just like to add that I think this is an issue that's going to have to be done by the joint committee, and you've got all your elementary schools involved. And I think that's the, those meetings is where this should come up and be discussed. You've got elementary schools, you've got high school, and that group is going to have to move this agenda forward, not necessarily from a high school point.
Well, I have to disagree with you. And my reason for that is that it's pretty much a majority of the elementary parents that want nothing to do with this. They certainly don't want to see their children going earlier, which I don't blame them, you know, especially with the winter and without sidewalks and all that different stuff. And the only alternative would be to put the elementary students after a later start of a high school. We're talking 9:30. So I just don't see that even being feasible.
Can I ask a question? This came to us through a couple, you know, individuals in the parent population, in the community that wanted us to look at this. We're not, we're responding to that, we're not driving the bus, no, pun intended. We're not driving the bus on this one to make the change.
That's correct.
Where is that, and you may not know, Maureen, I apologize, where is that community participation, that driving force that wanted us to? I think one individual moved out of the district, I don't know.
She's still in the district. I don't know that both of her children are here anymore, but that's a whole other story. Another parent who's very involved in CPAC is on the subcommittee and is very involved in this and has been in contact with me to say, where are we going with this? And like I said, we haven't done anything with PRC meeting in the summer.
Right, right.
And I haven't focused on this.
Oh, no, no, no.
But I, but I don't want to, you know, I said it, I didn't, I didn't even want to be on the damn thing, to be honest with everybody. But I felt that I had to because it was a request. It's something that I was on the original committee, you know, eight or 10 years ago. It was before its time, but now it's in the news every day.
Yeah. I just, this is just my one committee member's opinion. Again, I don't believe we should be driving this. Keeping on top of what's happening on this topic, you know, the eventual change it may, you know, cause, but, you know, the people that started this, that did the survey, et cetera, that group should be facilitating and moving this forward. This committee has a lot, and you do a lot for this committee. I don't know that we should be moving this along for the district.
But it's an educational issue. I mean, it's a whole basis of it. It's not for convenience sake, it's because it's kids, it's affecting the education of the kids. So no matter who brought it up, I think it is in our purview and we need to be involved in it.
And I, and I don't disagree with you in the least, Jim, but I think somebody made the point a few moments earlier that, you know, the elementary school population really isn't on board with this. Is the high school, is the Silver Lake Regional going to drive? Try to make this change?
I don't think, look at it as driving it, I think we're facilitating it. We're offering members of our communities, all three communities, and obviously we need to have our administration on board to answer some of the questions, the athletic director, all those type of things. As far as the busing, if you had read the municipal report, you realize that they weren't very, there's nothing that can be done because we share all the buses. However, however, when the buses get to the regional level, there's no reason that the Ploton Bus can't scoot into Kingston to pick up.
Agreed, agreed.
So that's where the difference comes in. The fact that the elementary schools are individual, then you'd have to get, think about it, it just wouldn't work. I believe that it needs to stay at this level, and we need to do whatever we can and be prepared because I believe the state will make it a mandate.
I think they will eventually as well. I'm not sure how long or how far off that is. I, you know, I think it's, my opinion is that it's going to be off a little bit further than, you know, many people would like. The report I would love to see because there's also potential cross-savings someplace in there as well. So that's kind of hitting a couple of birds with one stone when we get that. I'm only one participant in this group, but I think that, I don't believe this committee should be facilitating for the entire process here unless it falls, and I would agree with Mark, under the union.
It's not a union issue, Paula. It's grade seven through 12, we are the region. K-26 is not region.
No, I realize they are region, Maureen, I didn't say they were. But this was a community effort. This sleep study was a community effort.
Because originally, we thought we would have to include the union. And since then, the decision has been made that we would not look at that to change the students' time from K-26.
So I think we focus on educational issues. I was involved in a kindergarten study that couldn't undo buses at midday. We were buying buses. By taking the buses out, we ended up hiring teachers with money we spent for buses. And this is a parallel project here. When you realize that the best time for our kids to come to class and go home from class, it should be the primary focus. We're letting an education issue be driven by transportation. I understand in a perfect world, we could afford that. But if Silver Lake Regional High School contracted its own buses on its own contract, and everybody else did their own on their own contract, and we didn't share that contract, we wouldn't be having this discussion. Does anybody go to school and they want to go to school? So I think, I agree with Maureen, it is our issue. If moving those times is something we should do for the benefit of our students, we should move that agenda forward. And if we get rid of the committee, I don't think we're going to do that. But it seems to work in other communities. It doesn't impact athletics to the point where we would have to get out of our leaves or anything. I think it should stay on the agenda as a subcommittee. And I changed my mind. The union, though, needs to be involved because it's going to cost more money if they're going to go out on their own and get their own buses for elementary school. And I still don't think, I think we ought to look at that.
Ed, what's your suggestion?
We need to stay involved in this simply because if more people down the line come asking us about this process, that we need to have answers to them ahead of time, which doesn't always say, look at this, we did this study, this is how the trends are going. Not necessarily us pushing it forward, but we need to keep our.
Be a person.
We need to do our homework and be able to tell people, well, this is why we're not moving forward, or why we are moving forward. That study, I mean, actually, I'm not completely, I haven't completely digested it, but who knows, maybe. We have contracts with vehicles. Has anybody considered possibly looking at buying the vehicles for one, try to route or contract? I mean, there's all sorts of other things to be. I mean, there's all sorts of other things to be considered. Just something I'd point out.
Yeah.
I'm not saying we're buying a bunch, a fleet of buses, don't say that. But it's just something to be thinking about.
The only thing I'd like to do as well is to change the name of this committee because they have a website that's actually called School Stop Times. And I think that that's more appropriate than a sleep study.
I agree.
I'll make a motion on that. Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
It's a good idea.
Treasurers' report.
Okay. We have 11 total warrants going around. Nine in our accounts payable warrants totaling to $747,154.77. And then we have two payroll warrants going around.
That's the last one.
And they are totaling $160,361.67 for a grand total of $907,516.44.
Thank you for that. And Union 31, which we know we just matched.
Thank you. As part of the union meeting, the committee agreed with Silver Lake and the union to appoint Dr. Jill Prue as the new assistant superintendent. Prue will have her on board and she will be officially starting at the end of the month and will be able to join us for opening day. So I'm very excited.
And was you hand this decision in with her?
Thank you.
Jumping down to Superintendent's report.
Thank you. I didn't actually have much tonight because the main focus was getting Jill on board, which I'm thrilled about. But I did just want to mention National Night Out. I wanted to really thank the community, the police departments of Kingston, Duncan and Halifax, as well as the fire departments of Kingston, Duncan and Halifax. I want to especially thank all of our custodians who are out there and making sure everything was ready. It was a great night. I did not know there were that many cars in the area and I didn't know our parking lot could accommodate so many. And I didn't know there were that many ways to put cars up on the edges of curbs. It was truly a puzzle. It was great fun. It was, it was a wonderful, wonderful night. It was a gorgeous night. The weather was perfect. They had pony rides for the kids, they had motorcycles. We had two helicopters land. We actually had a Blackhawk helicopter that landed on our field. I'm very happy to say the field was great, there was no damage. And they did raffles, they had little food booths, the clam chowder was fantastic. And it was just a really wonderful, wonderful evening. Actually, there were goats too. So there was a tremendous number of kids, there were bike rides. It was just truly a family event. So I just want to thank the community for joining us and I want to thank everyone who helped the host event.
Wonderful.
It was great. It was a great, great night.
Excellent hosting.
Yes.
Okay. Believe it or not, future meeting, September 14th, our next school committee meeting. And now if I could have a motion for us to go to executive session to come up and share our votes in the current. Do you have a motion?
I'll move second.
All those in favor?
Aye. We got to do that, we got to roll the ball.
I think we probably, I am, I just said, Maureen, I think we are going to win this. Mark, Derek?
Yes.
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 Okay. Thank you.